Call the meeting to order and following our pledge allegiance this morning, we are going to recognize a moment of silence for Deputy Steve Makajuski who passed away this past week. He was not only a longtime member of our staff and good fellow, good friend to our, to our community, but also a father and a son and a husband. And so we'd just like to have a moment of silence following the pledge allegiance. So with that, I'd ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would welcome you to the county commission meeting for April 10th, 2018. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Your documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And with that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I forgot to mention Craig would have listening devices if there's anybody here that needs assistance with listening devices. He's sitting up here in the front. Item number two is approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2018. And I have a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a correction to correct the minutes to reflect the correct dates for convening and the previous adjournment from March 27th that was noted to April 3rd.
We have a motion. Is there a second? A second on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,321,200, excuse me, $977.43.
Pay the bills.
Second. Is there any comments on the bills? Commissioner?
Madam Chair, we've had $3,19,830 in motor vehicle funds remitted to the state. With that taken away, the total amount of our bills is considerably reduced. And this is the second time I've noticed it. I don't always notice everything, but the amount that we remitted to the state for, from the register of deeds for death is higher than the amount we remitted for births. So I've got to check on that.
We have a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for February 2018. Item B is the 2017 Safe Home Audit Report, and those are both on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia Larson.
Yes, we have abatements A through F all for the elderly assessment freeze and 2017 property taxes. So we have RDID 30591 in the amount of $153.37. RDID 39855 in the amount of $917.09. RDID 45764 in the amount of $272.36. RDID 49308 in the amount of $346.68. RDID 52904 in the amount of $736.46. And RDID 65551 in the amount of $396.56.
I'll take a motion on all of those A through F.
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number G is an abatement recommended for denial. Good morning.
Good morning. RDID 89616 in the amount of $859.59, we are recommending denial. This is land that was purchased in 2016, only 16 acres, so it did not qualify for ag. He did not come forward with his 2017 assessment, and he was too late to appeal for the 2018. However, we did have an assessor go out there, and he did qualify for the ag, but the application had to be filled out for him to be able to get that. He did not fill out the application, therefore, he did not have ag for 2017. So with us doing the assessor change, we switched it from $94,800 to $57,112. He still would like an abatement for his 2017 taxes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bird.
She needs to identify herself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Monica Hahnkamp with Equalization.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski.
It's interesting comparing this to the one that we did last week where they, again, didn't complete the paperwork, and yet we gave them the abatement because why would anybody not do it or not want to pay their, the tax that they rightfully owe, basically? Because we're charging them more if it was done properly than what they would rightfully owe. So it's a very similar situation to a home that we did not go with the denial last week. And just think about that as we vote, I guess, in consistency. So my, my comments.
Commissioner Bender.
I'm a little confused about the facts. So you said they bought the property and it didn't qualify for ag.
Well, it needs to be 40 acres.
Okay.
In order for it to qualify automatically for ag. Otherwise, you do need to come in, fill out an application, and show us that it is earning an income. So it's a process that they need to bring to us.
Okay. And then why did we go out and look at it when they hadn't filed it?
Because he had come in to appeal for 2018, but he was too late. He didn't make the deadline.
Okay.
So we went ahead and still sent an assessor out there. And so then in doing that, then we did do the assessor change for 2018.
And so how did he have notice? When, I'm trying to figure out the notice issue. When did he have notice?
March 1st of 2000, every March 1st, everybody gets their investment or assessment notice. So he received that March, around March 1st of 2017, whereas he did not appeal that value. Again, we did not know that it was ag or he was using it for ag. Well, so then when he got his 2018 assessment, then he came in, however, he was too late to appeal, which was fine because of the fact that we did send the assessor out there and went ahead and did change it for him.
So essentially, the thing that gave him the notice in 2018 was the same thing that gave him, should have given him notice in 2017. So he admits that he had notice, which I think is differentiates this situation from the situations that we've approved the last couple of weeks, is that those folks indicated that they had no notice. Here, he's admitting he had notice.
Well, and in both cases, you're going to get your tax bill where you will see.
Right. But the issue was acknowledgement of notice. And here, it sounds to me, based on the facts that you're presenting, that he acknowledged he had notice. He knew that it wasn't assessed as ag. He missed the deadline to come in.
Well, and I don't know that he noticed. All I know is that the assessment notices go out. I mean, he didn't state, "I noticed" in 2017.
But the same thing that provided him notice to come in and appeal.
Correct.
Even though he was late in that appeal, was what he had been, he had received.
Right.
For the year that he's trying to get the abatement.
Correct.
My comment would be, when did he buy, when did he buy this property? Did he, when he bought this property prior to that 2017, did he already think it was ag and he was continuing on this supposed ag farm?
And that could have been. I don't know. This is property that was split between children. And his was only 16 acres. So when we have something like that, it just doesn't automatically.
Right.
Unless it would have been 40 acres, then we would have known that it was ag. But it was split between kids and his was only 16 acres.
I'm going to support the, support if anyone makes a motion on that to, to not do a denial on it, to accept the abatement, just because I feel like this was a family farm that was split. And I, I sometimes think some, it's a little confusing even if it came on your little piece of paper that you get in the mail. You don't always notice those things right away, and maybe somebody brought it to his attention. But I think with this being a new purchased property or a split between a family and a new issue, and it was farm ag before, they were using it, continued to use it as ag, and they, and they qualify.
But the only way that they qualify is to do an application if it's under.
Right. But I mean, they do qualify because they are producing on that property.
Right. Which they do need to fill out an application and prove that because it's under 40 acres.
Yes. I understand that. Additional comments? Commissioner Bird.
So how does the 16 acres qualify as ag? I mean, do they have another farm?
They're farming it.
They're farming it, but it's not 20 acre, it's not 40 acres.
They are bringing or making an income.
That was one of the changes, Jeff, I don't know, a couple of years ago where you have a certain amount of money on that property, then it's considered ag if you're producing that much money.
Isn't that supposed to be 40 percent of their income?
We'll let Cory answer it instead of me.
Honorable Commissioners Cory Dash with the Director of Equalization Office. This qualifies now being that they are using it with a parcel contiguous to, to the parcel that it is, that this parcel is on. So the family-run farm owns a parcel next to this one, and this one is being farmed the same. So that's how it qualifies currently. So it didn't qualify when it was split out, it means it was 15.60 acres with the building eligibility. We just went ahead and put it on as non-ag based on the fact that it was under the 40, and they then came in this year to provide that information to make it ag.
Additional questions or thoughts or emotions?
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for $895.59.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? For lack of a second? Is there an additional motion?
I would make a motion to uphold the staff's decision and deny this.
A second to that motion.
I have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Motion passes three to two. So that one was denied. Item number seven is notice and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on our today's agenda? Come up and identify yourself and give your address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Riffel. I'm at 808 South Duluth Avenue here in Sioux Falls. I'm an advocate for the homeless, the street dwellers, however you want to label them, they are without safety. For the past 30 years, I've been an advocate for the homeless. I've raised 27 foster kids, seven kids of my own. And as my kids grew up, it graduated me into the adult arena. I am the one that started your homeless coalition. I'm the one that was out on the streets for years, taking petitions, being with the people one-on-one, helping to get them cleaned up, get them safety, and get them up the ladder. Through the many years now, I've sat back and let you people all make the decisions for their safety and their safe dwelling above their head to keep them out of the cold and the heat and to get them medicals, get them their IDs, help them with their diseases, their AIDS, their alcoholism, their numerous disqualifications that people tend to turn their nose up at. I am now to the point where I have also started eight organizations here in town in case you aren't aware of it. It's because of me that Facebook's here, the Obama phones, Community Outreach, Family House, the Angel House from the prison. I used to do prison ministry work for years. I used to work in state prisons, local jail houses. I used to teach reading and math. I thought it'd be something different than being out on the streets a little bit, gave me a break. It took me many, many years to try and finish an education. April the 29th, I'll have my master's degree in international business management. I would like to retire from some of the work on the streets because my heart is breaking too much to deal with it. For every person that dies on the streets, no one seems to care. I loved our officer who passed away, and he loved me and the people that I work around. We gave him a minute of silence. How many times have you given the street people a minute of silence? I have started other organizations in town as well than the ones I've mentioned. I'm very, very upset with our community on a whole. I've spoken at city council meetings. I've let them know that decisions are ruining over $400 million, buildings falling down, people dying on the streets, and nobody cared except to bring entertainment back into the city to up our city. We are in the top 10 of the most corrupt political arena that there is. I am here now because you've undid all my work all those years ago, and I have been blessed by the bishop himself for doing the Bishop Dudley House. Many times, I sat at directory with naval, native tribes and military people and veterans and homeless and prison workers and released inmates. And the bishop at the Dudley House opening gave me his rosary, and he bowed and kissed my hand. The mayor has said, "Thank you for improving our city." And now I find out that the Bishop Dudley House has done an about-face. Do you know we have no safety center, no safety net for people in our town now? Bishop Dudley, you get charged for using lockers. You try and get a job and get some money coming in, they make, pay for it. Now they put new rules and regulations up on a door. By the way, I was given open door policy from the bishop to the Bishop Dudley House. There's favoritism in there. There's people in there working that have sexual offenses against them. They're touching the people while they're sleeping and when they wake up, they're going through their backpacks and everything like that. They throw their belongings into the garbage. Now you have so many days to get some help. How do you expect to take a person off the street and give them help in 120 to 180 days? It's not going to happen. But when you use that time up, you're done, you can't go back in. You can't go in for day services now no more unless you're part of the system. You can't go in for a meal. You can't do your laundry. You have taken and allowed the Bishop Dudley House to hurt the people more than what they were doing before the Dudley opened. At least before the Dudley opened, we had the Keteri Center, the Bishop, Good Shepherd Center after the Keteri. I worked the Keteri with Sister Gabriella. I'm well-known. People call me Katie on the streets or Grandma, as the case may be. My heart's broken. My daughter was one of your street dwellers. She left this city because the city was actually killing her. And you know what it's like for me to see buildings being torn down to beautify the city? Makes me feel great, but that also reminds me, my daughter living in them basements, shackled down underneath the dwelling construction of the building, being in dilapidated buildings worried that they're going to fall. Well, we tried to get her help through the system, and you know what the system did? Because she called herself, quote and unquote, "I'm nothing but a stupid town dumb drunk." I told her, "Don't say that." But the county gave her a one-way ticket out of here instead of helping her. So she goes back east. She had five years to live. You know where she died? In an old farmhouse with no running water. He would go out and get a jug of water to flush it down the toilet. No running water. No heat in the building except the very bottom. The dilapidated farmhouse belonged to some farmers who said that because she was on the streets so much, she could stay there. And so she did. She took beautiful care of that place. She built it up like you used to talk about building our neighborhood up, flowers, gardens. And I went back and buried my daughter after I buried my son who had HIV and left the area because he wasn't treated right. So that's two. Remember, I said I have seven. My third son almost died, cerebral palsy, mental retardation, handicappedness. I had twins. A cord was wrapped around his neck. Had nothing to do with drugs. But he was born that way. He now goes to life skate. We gave, he was given three days to live in June a year ago. He was dying of a broken heart, and nobody recognized it but me. Because I was dying of a broken heart, I've had heart attacks, strokes, memory loss, and the only thing that got me back my memory is the doctor said I had to go back and do what I was doing. You know what I was doing? Street work. I wasn't a prostitute, a hoe, anything you want to label. I'm just an ordinary citizen trying to help somebody down and out. I've been homeless a few times. I've had my animals taken from me because of situations. I've had my kids ripped out of my home because I was busting a chief of police bad geese because he was raping foster children who confided in me. Now what am I supposed to do? Ignore that? Heck, no. So I had to work and do what I had to do. He tore my family apart, came in with warrants and everything else, separated my kids in different homes because the heat was on him because I'm good at what I do. And I got him. I got him, and I got him more than I even thought I could do possible because one of my foster daughter's father used to be a retired, was a retired cop, had another little farmland. I took her home to visit her dying mama because they asked me to take her in. And there was these people walking up on the hill, there were guns, suits and guns. Well, I was raised around mafia and stuff. I knew all about that stuff. I'm a very active person. Used to be an ambulance driver, tractor trailer driver, race car driver. But when I saw these people walking up the mountain and cross the top, I didn't realize what was going on until I saw this tiny plane landing. Well, it was not a plane strip up there, but he was landing and all these limos were going up there. Now me being mafia and stuff, I was curious, only to find out that Papa, the retired police said, "Katie, don't go up there. That's the chief of police with his drugs."
Mrs. Riffel.
I have to say this. I have done everything I could to work in our community. I have done everything I could to work back east. I know what it's like to have my family torn apart and on the streets. And taking down the chief of police and coming into this town for my safety and security and well-being of my children has only brought me to the enlightenment that somebody's slipping on the job here.
Mrs. Riffel, we have exceeded the time that we use for our, for public comment.
Well, I would like you to open up an emergency center. We need one. I'm coming back every meeting and every city council like I was doing. I got papers to prove the organizations I opened up.
Madam Chair, I think it's time to ask this lady to leave. I respect your opinion, but your time is up, ma'am.
Okay.
Mrs. Riffel.
But you do understand what I'm saying.
Yes, we do. And we are working towards some type of emergency building. And I appreciate all the things you've done in your past. I was not aware of all these programs you've started, and it's really, truly amazing. And we are working towards trying to make things better in our community. And I appreciate the fact that you've come and enlightened us in some of your issues.
Do I need to come back and speak at more meetings? Or can you inform us of what you're doing to open up a real shelter?
We would gladly inform you of what's going on. So you would, can speak to one of our staff, or you can speak to one of the commissioners after a meeting, and we'll gladly tell you what we're working on.
All right. Because I can't go away. I want to retire, and I want to do something with my life.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? That being said, we'll move on to routine, regular business. Item number one is a public hearing to consider annual retail on-sale liquor license applications submitted by Blue Haven Barn. Olivia.
Yes, Blue Haven Barn has submitted an application for an on-sale liquor license. As you may recall, they did have or still have a malt beverage license right now, and they're looking to change that. We have received no concerns or complaints from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning and Zoning Department, and Amanda is here if you have any questions for her.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone? Amanda, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Not unless you have questions.
Okay. Is there anyone that is opposed to this? Okay. So you're moving? Commission action?
I have a question for Olivia. Olivia, what does this license do that's more than a daily license, so to speak? We've had many events at Blue Haven Barn where they got a license. Is this a permanent thing?
This is. So instead of people coming in who will be catering out there, Blue Haven will be able to provide it themselves.
Okay. Can I ask what that costs them?
Mm-hmm. I wrote it down. It's $192,360.
Yay. Yay for me, I mean. So I'll make a motion to approve this.
Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the retail on-sale liquor license application submitted by Blue Haven Barn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is consider a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing April 15 through 21st of 2018 as Volunteer Week in Minnehaha County. Jen Atkins.
Hi, good morning. Genetics from Human Resources. Each year since 1974, National Volunteer Week has been recognized as a way to help encourage volunteerism in our communities. This year, April 15 through the 21st, has been designated as National Volunteer Week. Minnehaha County then takes this opportunity to express our gratitude and our appreciation for the volunteers who donate so many hours of service in many of our different departments. So this morning, I'd like to read a proclamation declaring this Minnehaha County Volunteer Week, and then ask the commission to consider a motion to approve that.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it if you'd read it.
Whereas National Volunteer Week is April 15 through the 21st, 2018, and whereas National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities, and whereas volunteers make a significant contribution to Minnehaha County. In 2017, each month, an average of approximately 278 volunteers contributed to several areas throughout the county, giving thousands of hours of service, enriching the lives of those they have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Minnehaha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas, the Minnehaha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support county government and make our community a better place to live. Now, therefore, the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 15 through the 21st, 2018, as Minnehaha County Volunteer Week.
Thank you, Jen. Are there questions or comments?
Believe it or not, I would make a comment.
Okay.
Here in the room right now, we have a number of groups that benefit greatly from volunteers. We've got the Sioux Empire Fair represented. We've got the museum represented. We've got emergency management represented. We've got the sheriff's department represented. I mean, they get hundreds of hours of donated time from people who volunteer. And when I think of, you know, what they've given us, it saves the taxpayer and it makes our community, our county, a better place.
Additional comments? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a presentation on the Forward Sioux Falls 2018 Investor Briefing. Jason Ball, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, members of the commission. Thank you very much for allowing me some time to connect with you and talk about a big, exciting program. And can I drive from this computer?
Jason, can I just get you to identify who you're with?
Yes. I'm Jason Ball. I'm the president and CEO of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And I should specify today, I do appear wearing several hats related to this program. I'll be speaking about activities that are going on not only at the Chamber of Commerce, but also at the Development Foundation through the Forward Sioux Falls Program specifically, and then as well as the Sioux Falls Thrive Program and the Discovery District. So I'm going to attempt to be brief, but there's just a lot of good things going on, and I think you'll be encouraged by this information that we provided to our investors here recently. As you're all aware, we're on an upswing in the Sioux Falls area. We have celebrated our fifth record year in a row of construction permits totaling now more than $735 million in our city. We issued more than seven, 6,700 permits in Sioux Falls last year. That is more than Des Moines, more than Lincoln, Nebraska, more than twice the number that were issued in Fargo, North Dakota for that same time period. So we are really experiencing some exciting growth. The city itself added 10,000 new residents last year alone. And when you look at the growth in our MSA population, that population base increased 14 percent in the last six years. These are all healthy numbers for this economy and speaks well. We also added 22,000 jobs in the last eight years in this economy. So I know that we're going to talk a lot about some of the challenges that an employer So I know that we're going to talk a lot about some of the challenges that employers are having over this course of the Forward Sioux Falls program, but I can tell you, this economy is on an exciting growth trend, and there are many cities our size in other places in the nation that would gladly trade places with these data on any given day. You know, I alluded to one of the challenges that we're experiencing right now, certainly that's the unemployment rate. If you go back to the economic recovery where we peaked out at just a hair under 5% when the nation was hovering closer to 10% unemployment, to now where we're pretty steady between 2% and 3%, where we have persistently and endemically been since the mid-'90s at least. On top of that, we have one of the highest labor force participation rates in the nation compared to the national average at 63%. We're about three-quarters of our population base is engaged in employment. That number also gets ticked up a little bit more here compared to other places because we do have a high number of, say, farm families in our area that are working site jobs and additional employment. And so when the consultant provided this information to us, he was actually asked, how do we go from, you know, 75% workforce engagement to 80? And he said, look, that doesn't happen anywhere. That's not how we win. And so these two statistics between our low unemployment rate and high labor force engagement is what endemically low unemployment is going to look like. This is going to be our biggest challenge moving forward in the next few years because our economy wants to outgrow our population base in terms of the jobs that it can accommodate. That being said, we have a lot of reasons to be excited. If you look at the entire economy of South Dakota, we've got about 25% of that is finance and insurance and real estate related in South Dakota. That's a great sign because those are all very large industries here. Not quite 10% of that total pie is related to healthcare. And so obviously, those are important sectors here, as well as nearly 10% manufacturing that's well represented in this area as well. And that's a total state GDP of about 48 million. We constitute about 38% of that total GDP. Those are real numbers from 2016 provided by the Bureau of Economic Analysis is where that comes from. Forward Sioux Falls is a partnership of the Development Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce. We're in our seventh iteration of this program. So it is a five-year funding and visioning campaign. I want to stress, Forward Sioux Falls employs zero people. Specifically, most of the employees for programs that are funded through Forward Sioux Falls are either with the Chamber of Commerce Development Foundation or one of the programs that we have funded through this program. And Forward Sioux Falls really serves as a unifying strategic vision for both the chamber and the Development Foundation. It's been a time of transition. As you're aware, there's a open president's position with the Development Foundation. I'm fortunate enough to serve on that search committee. I hope they bring in someone better than the turkey they got to come in and run the Chamber of Commerce last year. No, we're excited about what the future of that search is going to be. It is actively underway. We are trying to get that position filled as soon as we can because we don't want any of the momentum to slow down. I think you'll see in the rest of the presentation, it's not. We're full steam ahead on that. I do want to note, the chamber's been asked to play, I think, a stronger role when it comes to front office and back office type of activities. Most notably, we're in the process of, well, we're in the early stages of implementing a plan to combine our accounting departments between the Chamber of Commerce and Development Foundation. So that will become an animal of the chamber. This is a pretty natural extension of what has been happening. The chamber already does the books for the Sioux Empire Housing Partnership. We do the benefits for the Sports Authority in addition to books and benefits for the CVB Chamber, Chamber Foundation, and the Forward Sioux Falls itself. So it's kind of a natural extension of some logical combinations that many of our private sector partners and investors make, and we're going to keep moving forward with that. Next stages will be things like shared HR services, shared IT services, and other things that we can, I think, bring some more unifying clarity to in a centralized way. And the last thing I'll mention is, and I don't have a fancy slide for it, you all are aware that the Chamber of Commerce quite proudly and openly tries to be the unified voice of the broadest business community here. We feel like we do that very well and are happy to carry those initiatives forward at the direction of our leadership in the community. And we appreciate the partnership with this body that we have always had in the furtherance of that mission. These next few slides are going to concentrate on activity that's happening with the Development Foundation. The Workforce Development Program also is an open vice president's position with the Development Foundation. But the Workforce Development Manager, Jennifer Tuttle, has really taken the reins on that program and has been doing a good job in keeping that momentum there. And I'll talk about just a few items. The first of which is sioufals.com. They are in the process of adding more updated and new information to that website. When they established this website, though, unfortunately, it was established without a unifying community brand and community vision for what Sioux Falls is and for what the Sioux Falls area is. And so at the same time that we're trying to refresh some information about what's going on with several employers in town, we're also trying to provide a new look at what it means to articulate in an authentic and meaningful way what it means for people to live and work and play and spend their time in Sioux Falls here. When you compare our website look and that marketing play, if you will, to what's going on in other communities like Lincoln, Nebraska, or Omaha, we have some work to do when it comes to that branding space. And so we'll be talking a lot about how we brand and articulate the vision of this community to the outside world here in the coming months. The Workforce Development Program continues to focus on targeted populations. Those are listed there. They tend to be populations they feel are, one, underserved in many respects when it comes to accessing workforce opportunities. There are also populations where we feel that organized programs like the Workforce Development Program can actually move the ball by targeting specific groups and trying to customize resources and solutions to their needs. That's going to continue in the coming months. And then I hope you all have seen the WIN newsletter that now comes out monthly. This is a production of the Workforce Development Program at the Development Foundation. It is done in partnership with Jody Schwan of sioufals.biz. Each month, Jody will do not only an article, but a video interview and a video highlight of a business that is succeeding when it comes to recruiting and keeping their workforce. So in this difficult environment, what we've identified as a necessary thing to do is tell people about what's working, not just commiserate over the challenges that we feel as a business community. This newsletter is distributed monthly over internet, email, and website resources. It has been seen in all 50 states. So this has become one of those exciting opportunities to authentically tell that story of what's going on in the Sioux Falls market here and hopefully attract more workforce and residents to come and want to live, work, live and invest here. Out at Foundation Park, of course, next month, we're coming up on the grand opening of the windchill facility. That is a $40 million investment in 200,000 square feet, creating another 40 jobs in their first phase of that activity. And I think the real exciting stuff for us is structurally, they occupy, you can see where windchill is labeled on that map. We now have, highlighted in the red, several sites that are fully utility-served, fully roadway-served, fully graded for the most part, and are ready-to-go, true shovel-ready sites that put us ahead of the competition in other areas of the nation, particularly for projects of that logistics size that need good access to rail and to interstate systems. So we're very excited about what's going to happen. I apologize it's difficult to see on the screen, but the gray area immediately to the south of the red highlighted area will be the second phase for development. And I'm excited to tell you, just through the natural course of answering questions and solving issues as they come up, there have been other companies that we're talking to right now that may need some of that more southern portions for their operations. So it's an exciting time. And I will tell you, having been someone that used to do this work for economic development in Lincoln, they have a very active list of leads and companies that they're talking to. I'm afraid I don't have any announcements to make today, but they've got a great team right now led by Dean Dizik, who is functioning as the interim president for the Development Foundation, and things are going well. So we're very encouraged about the future of Foundation Park. Another area where I'm excited about our involvement with Forward Sioux Falls has been the USD Discovery District. This is a shared business and research park that is going to be located near the University Center area. It is a true partnership, right, led by the state of South Dakota, but also involving USD along with your Chamber Development Foundation city in Forward Sioux Falls. Having this resource available here, it really will fill a couple needs that we have. As we're all aware, we don't have a seat of one of our regional institutions here, and so those connections to university research and university professorial assets is difficult in an economy this size. So having a research park will allow us to better market our economy and our city as a place for companies that are developing platform research and needing access to university research partnerships to be able to come and have a place to do that. I will add, it's also a great, great fit, given the prevalence of the healthcare industry right here and the high amount of fundamental research activity that they're doing through those healthcare systems, too. So once we see more development of the USD Discovery District, I think we're going to see some very exciting business development things happen. The streets in black are in. The areas highlighted in red is where their first phase of development plan is going to be. Rich Nazers is the president of USD Discovery District, so he's kind of got a foot in both the Zeal Center for Entrepreneurship and USD Discovery District right now. If I remember too, I'll give a quick note about Zeal here at the end. The governor has said that he is expecting a couple announcements in 2018 from Rich. So Rich has really got the pressure on and is doing some quick work there. I hope we can get there. I can tell you, there are some active agreements that are being finalized even right now as we speak. So I'm optimistic that we're going to see a couple exciting things get announced at USD Discovery District yet this year as well. Forward Sioux Falls supported a couple initiatives at the airport. I just wanted to throw this up there. It's been the seventh record year of outbound passenger traffic here in our airport. That's up 6.5% over last year. And of course, as we all know, we want more flight diversity, more time diversity and location, and options for places that we can fly to and from here. This tells a great story about what the future of that airport is going to be like there. Every time I talk with them, they're thinking about how can we get more connections to the coasts right now. And I think if we're able to accomplish that through sustainable ridership, we're really going to increase our ability to bring in more business contacts. And then again, it'll be a greater asset for just the citizens of the area trying to get where they need to go for vacations and recreational travel. And the last note I'll give today is Sioux Falls Thrive. This is probably the biggest and most difficult push in all of Forward Sioux Falls right now. Sioux Falls Thrive has set the agenda that they intend to focus on the cradle-to-career components of workforce development ultimately. And they have focused much more on the cradle-to-midway-through-school areas where there are alignment needs that they need. So Candy Hansen has done a great job of creating this program. It did not exist about a year ago. This is the first year for Sioux Falls Thrive in existence. They spent most of that first year focusing on how they can bring alignment and coordination to housing services and housing programs. And now they are in the process of developing ways that they can increase workforce housing, not through more nonprofit partners, but by working with private developers to create more workforce housing here. So what they feel is going to be a more sustainable direction and not based on creating more not-for-profit entities as they go along. They've also become an organization that is leading the way in how we gather information and insight about our community, working with Augustana and a bucket of other partners. Later this spring, they're going to launch the Open Sioux Falls website resource, so it's going to be a publicly available database where, you know, if the chamber does a study on workforce development in Sioux Falls, we'll be able to post it there so the entire community can benefit from it. It also consolidates information that's already publicly available but in diverse areas from, say, the BEA or the city of Sioux Falls or the counties, so that it can be a centralized database for organizations to use and add to their research capabilities. Last two things I'll mention is they have two active studies going on. One is on food safety for children, because a child that does not have safe and reliable access to food cannot be expected to be successful in school. They are then going to do a child safety study, a safety study for out-of-school context for children, because a child that is not in a safe environment outside of school cannot be expected to have success when he or she is in school. So I really want to give credit to Sioux Falls Thrive. It's going to be, it's going to feel like slow progress, but they are taking on, I think, some of the hardest issues that we are dealing with in this community, and we are grateful for their partnership in that. Last note I will mention, I hope sometime you all get to interact with the new executive director of Zeal. She just started last week, and so I mentioned, Rich Nazers is the president of USD Discovery District. That job continues to eat up more and more of his time, so they have added an executive director of the Zeal program so that we don't see a slowdown in this exciting trend in entrepreneurship. And so that's Michelle Jirdy. She actually will be holding her first board meeting on board today later this afternoon. So we're all very excited to begin working with her. And finally, thank you very much for this body's support of Forward Sioux Falls, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions if I left any time for that.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Are there any questions for Jason, what you're doing? Commissioner Ball.
Well, first of all, Jason, thank you for being here. And yesterday, I very much enjoyed Ambassador O'Sullivan's presentation. And last week, we had Holly Barons, Barons here, and she was a pretty exciting presenter. You know, your organization, I think, for a long time has been leaning into the future in a positive way, and I really appreciate that. And, you know, I think the goal is to increase the wealth of our entire community, but at the same time, I think, we do lead the country, I think, close to the most people with two jobs, because that's hard to make ends meet. In fact, we may even lead it with people with three jobs. And I noticed in The Economist magazine that two states had a reduction in the number of immigrants with college degrees. One was Wyoming and the other was South Dakota. And it seems to be an untapped resource. If there are people out there with, whether it be medical skills or technical skills, we ought to be encouraging them to come here, because we have jobs and we need to fill those jobs. And again, I really appreciate, you know, working to increase the wealth of our entire community and region, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those kind words.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else? Okay, thanks for coming and sharing.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is authorize a chairman to cite a contract for design and production of an interactive exhibit between the city of Deadwood and Siouxland Heritage Museums. Bill Hoskins, good morning, Bill.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Yeah, this is a, this is a contract for a design and production services from the museum's exhibits department with the city of Deadwood. We would be taking their research, their script, their graphics, and putting together these panels for an exhibit and producing them under this contract. All the revenues and expenses would be handled through the museum's special enterprise fund.
Questions for Bill? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is a brief presentation from the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Bill.
Well, I know you, many of you are familiar with the museum, but a brief run through, the Siouxland Heritage Museums were founded in 1974. Were dedicated to the experience of learning in our community, its families and visitors through the collection, preservation, and interpretation of history. We're currently operating two buildings, the Old Courthouse Museum, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. Both buildings are on the National Register of Historic Places. They were both designed by the same architect and completed about a year apart. The Pettigrew in June of 1889. The Old Courthouse, the county moved into in December of 1890, actually before it was built, was completed. We are working on a third site that should be completed later this summer. We are working on a third site that should be completed later this summer to house the museum's collections. The Sioux Land Heritage Museums were formed in 1974. There is an 11-member advisory board, five people appointed by the county, a liaison, four citizens, five people from the city, a city council liaison, and four citizens that are appointed. The 11th member is the president of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums Alliance, a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit friends group. The board is responsible for a number of things, the things that come to mind, but basically their job is to put together a budget and make a recommendation of a budget annually to you. They also make recommendations to you on policy decisions and on hiring of a museum director, some of the specific things they're responsible for. We have a 16-member staff. We're organized into four different areas. The collections department, we call it, are responsible for the care, conservation, and documentation of the objects that make up the museum's collection. Education staff present, develop, and present programming on and off-site in support of the museum's mission. Our exhibit staff, design, produce, and build our exhibitions. Administration does all the other miscellaneous things. The staff is smaller than it was 10 years ago. We're about two full-time positions smaller than we were in 2010. All of the staff are involved in our interpretive program, the development of our exhibits, the programs, the running of the store. We are supported by a great team of volunteers, 108 volunteers last year who donated 8,800 hours in support of the museum. They're really priceless. We recognize our volunteers annually at an annual volunteer banquet that is coming up next week on April 19th. You all are invited to come if you wish. That program is coordinated on a part-time basis by one of our staff members, Jesse Nessam, who's a museum interpreter. Visitation, 2017, just over 81,000. We were open approximately 5,200 hours at the Pettigrew and the Old Courthouse to the public. Busiest days of the week were Saturday, Friday, and Thursday in that order. Busiest months of the year, May, March, August, and July. Visitors came from 47 states, 35 foreign countries. Top states are sort of the obvious, South Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, but some of the others, California, Wisconsin, Illinois, Florida. A lot of that visitation actually mirrors a lot of investment by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and state tourism, where they're spending dollars, they're reflecting our visitation as well. The staff takes care of over 109,000 catalogued objects. They range in size in a great deal, from the Faywick Flyer, a pretty big automobile, down to things smaller than a dime. About 3,000 objects per year are on exhibition. We have an online component where people can search. That's hosted by a separate site, but there's about 10,000 objects there. Public research requests have gone up about seven to eight percent per year over the last five years and continue to rise. Our collections really reflect the items of our community, the cultural heritage of this region. We have a lot of community firsts, the first automobile, the first newspaper, the first minute book of the city council, things like that. Really, education has been one of our big efforts in the most recent time period. Last year, we did 690 programs on and off-site for about 46,000 people. We also presented over 1,400 guided tours through the historic house. Those programs were for 49 different K-12 schools in 24 different school districts, including every single school building in Minnehaha County. Most of our off-site programming occurs in the city of Sioux Falls. Yeah, a lot of work in the Sioux Falls schools. But 12% is in Minnehaha County outside the Sioux Falls district, and 8% in Lincoln County as well. Programming has increased by over 300% in the last 18 years. It's been on a pretty steady march upwards. Some of the most popular programs, onsite, we have our concert series, kids' activity, which is a make-and-take craft program. Offsite, we have things like the Civil War Soldier, teepee, Star Lab, Pioneer Experience. The Star Lab's an inflatable planetarium. We use both onsite, in the law library and courtroom, and offsite. Teepee is a program that's very interactive with students. It's very popular, where kids help set up a teepee in the classroom. Pioneer Experience, staff actually dresses up as pioneers, take a trunk into the room, read experiences pioneers had, and try and make a connection with the kids. They're all very popular programs. Our exhibitions, we have six exhibition spaces at the Old Courthouse Museum, three at the Pettigrew Home. Our goal is to open four new exhibitions per year, one every quarter. Our exhibits are really priced out and intended to last 18 to 24 months. And that's a, that's a level of investment, because the public's very hard on exhibitions. Right now, our average cost is about $65 per square foot. That includes the labor that goes into it. If you were going and commercially contracting for that work, you'd be paying between $200 and $250 a square foot for comparable work. Our current exhibits, wide variety, Uphill Both Ways is on one-room schools, theaters. We have one on the teepee, which is designed as a traveling exhibit funded by the Daughters of the American Revolution. We have the Tonics and Tools of Early Medicine, which just opened at the Old Courthouse Museum on Friday. Cabinet of Curiosities, look at the early museums of Sioux Falls, and so on. We rent the Old Courthouse Museum facility since the restoration of the courtroom in 1987, and a previous commission said that we wanted to make that available to the public. We have rented the space. Last year, there were about 75 rentals, about 5,200 people participated. Staff worked an additional 382 hours for those rentals. That was either paid out in overtime or part-time labor. The Enterprise Fund, that we'll hear more about later this month, handles all the revenues and expenses associated with that, and all that labor is reimbursed to the operations budget by the Enterprise Fund. Weddings make up about 75% of the rental business. We work with a lot of different organizations. The Sioux Falls School District, some other neighboring school districts, the County Historical Society, Sioux Valley Genealogical Society, the Osher Lifelong Learning Center at the University Center, the state parks, the city parks, the Sioux Land Libraries. We do a lot of cooperative ventures. And we come to budgets, and our budget, Jeff says, is confusing sometimes, and I agree, but there are really six parts that make up the museum's budget. And each of the parts, unfortunately, has some different road rules on how we use those, but they almost all interact with each other in one level or another. I want to thank you for your support. Tried to keep it brief. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Bender.
Bill, I was just curious, as I was listening to your presentation, you talked a little bit about how programming was steadily on a march up. I'm curious about visitation. How's visitation been?
Visitation has been steady the last two or three years. But it's up quite a bit from 10 years ago, we were at about 60,000. It is increased, but the last couple of years have been fairly level.
Additional comments? Okay, thank you, Bill. Item number 15 is Consider Resolution Establishing the Facility Naming Policy Recommended by the Building Committee. Craig Dewey.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Last fall, the Building Committee met to discuss options for amending the building policy. In further discussions with the state's attorney's office and other county staff, it was determined that the county did not have a naming policy in place, and research was then undertaken to see what some of the practices were in other communities of a similar size as well as larger than Minnehaha County. As a result of that, a draft policy has been put together and discussed by the Building Committee. It's up for your consideration and discussion today. I would be happy to answer any questions. And before I would turn that over to you, I'll read the resolution as we do as standard practice.
Thank you.
It is called Establishment of Naming Policy for County Facilities. Whereas the Minnehaha County Commission undertakes careful consideration in planning for construction of county facilities, and whereas the generosity of private donors can be integral in providing funding for a project that would not otherwise be realized, and whereas counties, municipalities, and post-secondary institutions sometimes recognize substantial gifts through naming facilities, and now therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, a facility naming policy as follows. Final authority for all naming and renaming decisions shall be considered by the commission in a recorded vote during a scheduled meeting. Naming of facilities may be removed or changed by a vote of the commission in unusual circumstances when a prior naming decision could be damaging to the reputation of Minnehaha County or deemed not to be in the best interest of the county.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you for the work that you did on this. I know you had to pull a lot of different things together and come up with several different ideas, and this is what was recommended by the Building Committee. Is there any questions or comments or anything you'd like to change? Commissioner Kurski.
Just a comment, you know, we had several different options, and we hashed through them all, and I'm very happy with this final resolution. I think it leaves this commission and future commissions a lot of latitude in making decisions, and I think that's important, so I'm happy to see that we boiled it down to this.
Additional comments or a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. I do have a comment, though.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second.
I just think sometimes we get too tangled up in having too many procedures. I mean, who voted to make the WH Lion Fairgrounds, the WH Lion Fairgrounds? Who determined that the Pettigrew House should be called the Pettigrew House? Did we have a recorded vote on those things? I doubt it. In fact, I'm pretty darn certain of it. It seems to me that we are making a mountain out of a molehill.
Thank you for your comments. We do have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is authorize a chairman to sign the contract between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Empire Fair Association. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you is the next management agreement for the Sioux Empire Fair with the Sioux Empire Fair Association. And this is located on the WH Lion's Fairground, per naming in the deed that we did, that the family put forward a few years ago. The authorization today is to request permission for the chairman to sign this. We do have one change from the contract that you have. Instead of the audit being presented by May 1, we'd move that to July 1, just to make it a little bit easier for them to accommodate their timeframe. We went through state laws, we went through the deeds, we went through all that past information in order to make sure that we were following all the terms in this particular contract. A few things for your consideration. The contract does not have an automatic renewal after five years, so that provides us the opportunity to come together again to have this discussion. Section 5, we enhance the detail on financial responsibilities of each party. For instance, the county will provide a budgetary line item for capital improvements in the county budget with an amount to be determined annually. This practice is in place, it just puts it in as part of our responsibilities that we do. Clarification that the county will be responsible for expenses over $5,000. The county will have the expense of property insurance. This came in a few years ago, where we moved that over, and again, we're just putting it in the contract. The association is to provide an annual prioritized list of projects, which was implemented this past year, as the association works with our facilities director. And the association is to name Minnehaha County as an additional insured on the association's contract, and that is a new addition. Last couple of things that I'll just put in there are, section 6 clarifies that any expenditure of tax monies for capital improvements shall be subject to the laws of South Dakota, that is, per South Dakota statute, and also that monthly financials will be submitted to the commission office, and that's currently happening at this particular time. So with that one change, would present to you the contract for the Sioux Empire Fair Association.
Any questions for Carol? We also have Scott Wick here, who is with the association, the fair association, if there's any questions for either of them. Whereas I'd say that a group of people from the association and Commissioner Benega, who is their liaison, worked hard on putting this together again to come up with a new contract that seemed to was fitting for both sides, and so I thank you for that work that you put in on that. Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Kurski.
Under the section 5, the maintenance and repair, and I'm sorry for not doing my homework before, but this question just comes to mind, where we're responsible as a county for repair expenses that exceed $5,000, who determines the necessity of those repairs? You know, is there a process that we go through on this?
Correct. Our goal is with planning and communication, that we're going to be on top of what's going on out there between our two organizations, and that we're able to schedule in as much as we possibly can. What we're concerned about is recognizing as things happen. Things just happen. That's out of there. And so in those particular circumstances, you'll notice that in recognizing that things happen, there is a sentence early on in section 5 that references that when something happens, that the association and the county will come together and look at the emergency and the costs of it.
Scott is standing behind you.
Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair Association. Carol, I guess I need clarification on this $5,000. I interpret this that things that are over $5,000 need to be addressed and will only be repaired if, because you guys capitalized on five, provided their life expectancy is longer than three to five years?
Correct.
So is this the way I interpret this, $5,000 and under is ours?
Unless we have the conversation up here that when there are unexpected expenses, that we come together and have those conversations, like the furnace that just fell apart.
Correct.
That a couple, last year or so, that we had those issues that came up. So then we get together and have that conversation and talk about it. What can we do in-house? What can we have to do?
So hypothetically speaking, some part of a system breaks down that is part of the building, costs $3,500. Who's responsible for that?
We're going to have to sit down and have-
We'd have to have that discussion.
We'll have to have that discussion that's out there.
As long as that's open for discussion, then I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Benega.
General policy amongst most businesses is the fact that if it's under $5,000, but the longevity of the part will replace or enhance a furnace, you're probably going to capitalize it. If it's $5,000 or more, and frankly, it's only to repair something, that'll have to be part of your conversations in future budgeting processes to have contingency funds to be able to do that. That's also another reason why you asked for some cash flow, particular funds to be able to fund cash flow-related items, when you only have one large revenue source a year, and the rest of the time, you're frankly cash deficit issues. So those are things that just have to be worked out and be planned in detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve with the change in section 9 under meetings on the last sentence from May to July. Correct? July.
Yeah. Yeah.
Move for approval with the change?
A second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All those, Commissioner Benega.
The other thing that I would comment is having our facility manager, Mark, obviously out there on a regular basis has made some dramatic changes in a building that we own as a county, so that's important.
Motion and a second on the new contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen is Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I actually have three of them.
Okay.
And I think being liaison to the Treasurers Department, I see we have Hayden Graff here from the Treasurers Office. Last week, we had some discussion about answering the phone. And since then, you and I, Madam Chair, have met with the Treasurer and Hayden. And we had a frank discussion, exchange of views about things. And it appears that things are on their way to be resolved as far as the issue of answering the phone. Mr. Graff, would you care to come up and say anything?
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's, we did make some progress there. Secondly, I guess I've asked Scott Anderson to come because he has a suggestion for using part of his unused budget to help with enforcement in county nuisance-type complaints. And they frequently happen, and you got to drive from here to Teahope Township and look at one thing and then drive all the way back. And Scott, can you expand on my comment there?
Sure. Scott Anderson, County Planning. As you know, I have a small part-time budget in the 2018 budget. And some of you may recall that we used to have a code enforcement, a full-time code enforcement officer. And through some personnel leaving and under the direction of the County Commission, that position was eliminated and/or not refilled. And, but we, that's one of the major things that we spend a lot of time on is code enforcement in my department. And that code enforcement ranges from everything from, in the summer, nuisance grass to violations of zoning ordinances where you may have illegal businesses operating, buildings that have been constructed. And so it really, we spend a lot of time documenting, going out to these sites, documenting them, coming back in, inputting them into computers, writing letters, and sending them out. And then, as you all know, a code enforcement process takes a lot of time because you just don't send out one letter and wham-bam, it's all taken care of. Typically, it's a lot of handholding and more letters that go out, more documentation, more photos. You're all inputting that. And then eventually, we end up either bringing it. If we don't get a resolution, we either bring it to the County Commission or we work with the State's Attorney's Office. But they can be a lot of work. So what I've proposed is instead of hiring a summer intern, which we could have used for a few months, but they tend to go back to college around August 15th, I felt it was maybe a better use of our money to hire a temporary person that would maybe work 16 to 20 hours a week, you know, maybe three afternoons, maybe two full-time days. We can flex that schedule anyway that suits a person that we might hire. But they would go out, they would, we would, under the supervision of a planner or myself, we would work with them to send them out, document what's going on, to look at the complaints that we do get, and help us with that paperwork with the pitchers. And in addition, we are supposed to be, after a year, looking at every single conditional use permit that we've approved to make sure that it is in compliance, that it's operating. Sometimes we have conditional use permits. They may get a, they may get a conditional use permit for a home occupation and then decide never to really operate that home occupation. And then we need to keep track of those to void them out, to say that they didn't ever do what they said they wanted to do. And that's been also a lot of work because you have to go out, you physically work with, you know, having to go out. It's not my intention to have a temporary person actually going up and knocking on someone's door. There's not going to be that kind of interaction. And I don't, typically, we don't do that kind of interaction with a planner either because you don't want to go and confront someone immediately on their property. It's better, and you need to have a paper trail because then you don't get into the he said, she says, or whatever he said, he said. And so I floated this idea to Jeff Barth, and he suggested I contact other people like the Commission. And I did contact the Commission and HR and the Commission Office. And we all thought it was a really good idea, so we are moving ahead with that. I think it was posted yesterday for advertisement in whatever venues the HR uses. Hopefully, we'll get someone that is interested. My ideal candidate would be someone that has, you know, some free time, would like to be involved with something that is very interesting, a little bit demanding. You know, it's never going to be the same issue day to day because it could be anything from tall grass to piles of dead pigs. And it's literally that wide. I mean, it can be junk cars, it can be, you know, hoarders. It just, you never know what you're going to run into. So if anyone's out there in TV land and wants to have a really fun job and something is very interesting, come on down.
Temporary.
And it's temporary.
Yeah.
And so we'd be looking at, this would probably be about a, you know, six to eight-month type of a position. Because it's really tough to do a lot of code enforcement in the middle of the winter because it just, you can't go out and clean up property when it's 20 below zero and the grass isn't growing. And, but we still do get complaints from illegal salvage yards to, I mean, it's just, you never know what you're going to run into. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that's sort of where we're going right now.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Kersky.
Just curious, being an employer and when you hire a part-time person or a temporary person, are you going to have that agreement for the length of the employment going into it? How do you tell that person while you're done now? I mean, I'm just curious about the logistics. How are you going to work that?
Well, typically, we're pretty upfront that the position will be ending around December 1st. And it's a little bit weather, you know, weather-related. If we have more of an open winter and we don't have snow until middle of December, that's a possibility, too. It, I think that with this type of position, there needs to be some fluidity. And you're looking for someone that is, you know, can have some ability to be flexible, some flexibility, too.
I'm not an expert in labor law. I'm sure somebody around here is. And the reason I ask the question is, I mean, is there any sort of jeopardy of the county being responsible for unemployment or that type of thing? If we go from a part-time temporary position, I mean, what's our exposure in that?
I'm not a, I'm not a HR expert either, but that's why I involved the HR Department and Carrie Dever and her office and Jen, and they all looked it over. And I'm relying on their expertise that we're all good to go and there shouldn't be an issue. I think it, I think it's less than 24 hours. I don't know. There are some requirements. We're going to meet those. So I think we're okay.
Highway Department and several other departments have temporary workers through the summer.
Yeah.
And so it's really very similar program to what we're already been doing. We've been doing for years, so, just in a different direction.
Just a different direction. They'll be here up in my office instead of our seasonal park workers, which we'll start putting on, you know, to start mowing grass if winter ever goes away, so. But eventually, we're, you know, we hire several seasonal, part-time people.
Do you have a car available for this person?
They'll just use one of our office, we'll schedule that. We, yeah, we have a little office space. We will put them in that they can have a designated little, their own little desk. And they'll just use, we'll coordinate with our existing vehicles that when they're going out, we just know that that vehicle's gone and we won't be able to go out at that time. But it should work fine, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Commissioner Barth, did you have one more?
Well, lastly, I was going to ask Lindy Young to maybe comment. You know, there's been additional stress in our county ambulance system with MedStar appealing to the Brandon City Council for assistance and funding. And I think that we're doing fine right now. But faced with the potential, let's say, collapse of any one of our ambulance systems, we have to be prepared to take action. And I know our ordinance under the direction of Maggie and Lynn and Gerald is coming forward at some point. I don't think we need to discuss that. But, you know, I assume that we'll survive here.
Lindy Young, Emergency Management. So Commissioner Barth is correct. We were approached by MedStar Ambulance a couple of weeks ago. They are really just kind of laying the groundwork for a budget request to the Commission. They've also had a similar one to the city of Brandon for this next go-around. It's my understanding that Brandon's going to form a working group and really look into it a little differently because they have time. Their budget really isn't, their budget process really doesn't start until late summer. Our budget process obviously starts in the next couple of weeks. The Commission Office has sent those materials out. We'll send those materials out once again to all of the agencies, including MedStar and Paramedics Plus, just to continue our transparency that we would have with them. And then they'll have to report that stuff or send it back into the Commission just like you have received in the past with the other AMON services out there that receive county funds. I think what it does show is maybe some of the information that we got from the Fitch study on person, or on workforce issues and financial issues are probably coming a little sooner than what we thought when we look at that. But as far as operations, I want to, you know, ensure the folks that, Dr. Luther and I continue to monitor that and work together. And there are no lack of coverage, so to speak, issues. We do have those out there. We have an aggressive mutual aid system for backups. If any one of them are busy, you know, it happens a couple times, you know, a couple times a month where Garrettson's might be out on a call. So MedStar would be the natural person to do that. Similar over on the west side with Del Rapids and Humboldt. So I think the main point is, is we're going to see things as far as discussion, financial discussion, additional subsidies that the Commission has not dealt with since the ambulance ordinance was put into place many years ago. And the Commission will have to work through some of those. So I would expect through the budgetary process that you'll have some additional hearings that you may put and get those folks up in front of you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, just a little bit on the ordinance. Maggie and I are working on that. Hopefully, we can get that out yet this week. And that the first reading would be the 24th of the month, and we'll come up with a list of changes. Basically, you know, we had the Fitch ordinance and the old county ordinance. And just the way it works, it was probably better to input things from the Fitch ordinance into our ordinance. And it's really, you know, really come together nicely with that work group. So there's been a lot of hard work done. We'll bring some of those changes back. It's not the typical, you know, I know some commissioners like seeing it differently than other. There's not the typical, or it's difficult on this one to mark X everything out because there's been so much changes and everything. So it's really a clean slate as far as that goes. So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just, you know, I guess beyond the notice that there'll be some significant budget discussions, reference rural EMS when it comes to that time.
Questions?
I would just make a comment, you know. I'm so proud of our rural ambulance system that we have. And I recognize that it's got its issues. But in Sioux Falls, if you call for an ambulance and one is not ready, you wait in line. In rural Minnehaha County, if you call for an ambulance and the first ambulance is busy, they call mutual aid. You don't wait in line. Consider, you know, being at the store with one checkout line open. They don't, in Sioux Falls, they don't open a second checkout line. In rural Minnehaha County, we do. And I'm proud of that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other things, Lynn? If there's no other questions for Lynn. Okay. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kersky.
Last week, I met with DJ Boothier, Highway Superintendent. And in the last few weeks, they've had some meetings up in the far northeast corner of the county, Highland Township, I believe it is, north of Sherman. Highway, County Highway 103, 114, 109. They all have quite a bit of life expectancy, at least 10 years left, especially on Highway 103 up there. But they're really trying to get ahead of the process as far as that road is going to take a lot of work when it's time to be redone. It's got, the shoulders are nonexistent. The slope of the ditches is not within current highway standards, the road width, et cetera, et cetera. So they're really engaging the people that live out there and use that roads and putting all the options on the table. What is it going to look like? You know, what does each option cost? But they're really looking for the feedback from the people that live out there. In their first meeting, they sent out over 1,000 invites. And they did have a very, by typical standards, well-attended meeting. I think there were over 50 people that did attend that meeting. So they, again, it's not something that's going to be done or decided in the next year or two. It's a longer process. But they're just really putting all the options on the table and truly engaging the people that live out there to make it the best possible outcome without appearing, you know, governments coming down and telling you, this is what we're going to do. They really want to engage those people out there.
Okay, thank you. Additional liaison reports? Hey, I have two. I thought I was going to have none this week. I was wrong. Two different things. One, this week, we had, I was on the phone for the Improving Criminal Justice Response with the person with mental illness, the now, the state board that I sit over. And I was just going to give you just a few highlights from that phone call. There were people in peer, and then the sheriff and I elected to stay here and be on the phone. One of the things, this kind of all came to, in the beginning, was because the competency evaluations and the timeframe was so long and that they'd seen a huge increase in about three years from 2013 to 2015. Competency evaluations had tripled. They'd gone from 48 to 147. And so that's kind of how it came to light through the Argus Leader. So one of the things we did talk about in that phone call is that those competency evaluations, the timeframe has now reduced to 30 days according to state law. They want them down to 21, and so we're continuing to, the group is continuing to work towards how can we get those competency evaluations completed in 21 days? I will give you an example of in 2015, before this work started. Pennington County had 10 inmates who had been ordered to have competency evaluations. And those 10 inmates, their average jail stay was 223 days waiting for that evaluation. So we've made huge progress from where we were on that. House Bill 1183, which is where most of these, where these changes are, is ensuring that there are speedier court processing. And the Association, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, is the one that's taken on the funds that have been reallocated from HSC to pay for those competency evaluations. There's still some glitches working through that. And so Carol and I have had conversation about how do we make our process on this side butter with the state? The committee is aware of some of the issues, and hopefully, this next round will be easier. Part of it was everybody was ordering competency evaluations with different names. And so when it came down to getting paid for them by the Association, the Association's got a plethora of names that this is called. And you got to figure out, is it really a competency evaluation? Because that's the only part that we're tackling with the Association. So we continue to work through issues with that. But that is also going to hopefully see some recouping of costs for the county with paying for those evaluations. The jail, we also have community health jail data being collected in a pilot program. It's a self-reporting, so the numbers are, they've actually been pretty good. The refusal rate on those is small. There's about six jails that are doing that pilot program on looking at mental health self-reporting data. Effective July 1st, all attorneys in the state of South Dakota will be trained with mental illness training. And they will be having their CLPs available at their June conference and then online. Also, there'll be mental training, mental health training for all jail officers, and that's to be completed by 2018. So it was actually kind of, it was good to see the progress that we have made in the last year. A lot of them are still, we had red, right, red, red, yellow, and green light. Most of them were yellow lights, so we are moving forward on all the avenues that we had expected to move forward with. to move forward with. So it was a good phone call. And the other one I just wanted to, is kind of just to make you aware of, when I was at the NACO Conference National Association of County Officials in March, they offered a program called Cross Systems Partnership Lab, and they're offering that for the next 15 months to four counties in the United States. Well, when I was there, I talked to the staff who's going to be putting together this leadership lab, if we could do it in conjunction with Lincoln County. Well, they finally got back to me yesterday at about 5:00 and said, yes, we can do it with Lincoln County. The deadline for application to this is Thursday. So I've been on the phone with Lincoln County this morning. And so basically, what this is, is it would help us, it would give us technical support and tools and resources as we try to find operational efficiencies and pulling together some of the stuff that we're already doing with the MacArthur Grant. It runs for 15 months. It doesn't cost us additional funds. They're not actually saying, here's $20,000 you can do this with, but they're giving us a bunch of toolbox. And so I'm in the process with staff of trying to get that application ready to go by, I think it's Thursday night. So just an FYI, we'll let you know if we make it through the next step, and what that all entails. If you're interested in further information on it, I can give you the website. It's under NACO, and you can just read it. It's a short page of what they would offer to us through that program. So that's my report. If there's no other liaison reports, we will move on to new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? I would just let our audience know that 11:00, the Board of Equalizations will be convening here with their opening ceremony or opening meeting at 11:00. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, Sections 1 and 3.
So motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion adjourned to executive session.